Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. And Coach Ashley joins today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear today.
We are, we're excited that Julie and Colin have joined us today as well. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everybody?
So if you were around last week, or maybe a little bit the week before, you learned a very exciting announcement from Get Oiling, and that is that we now have a really easy to use block style drag and drop email builder. And today we are going to have an email design workshop. So if you have been interested in dialing in the design of how you show up in people's inboxes, you're in the right place. If you're a brand partner and you want to learn how to get this done well, to get this done in a way that you can save loads of money, we'll talk about what that looks like here in just a little bit. You're in the right place. We are a platform built by and for young living brand partners. We are the home for your business outside of the VO and we are so excited that you've decided to join us here today. So team, we are going to pop out a video. You guys head over into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Let us know what you are going to be maybe focusing on in terms of the design that you want to create. Do you have some ideas? We've got newsletter templates that we've discussed previously and I've also got some really convenient ones for you to start using here today. Greg just finished uploading some new templates that we'll be talking about here in just a bit. Alright, so today, as promised, we have an email design workshop. We're going to show you the easy way to create on-brand emails using the same platform that you use to manage your young living business or your businesses that are adjacent to complimentary to young living. So today, we're going to talk about how you can save time with reusable branded email templates. We're going to talk about how to create sections that you can easily drop in and swap whenever you need them. I love this feature. You guys are going to learn how this works. Save yourself a ton of time. We will talk about how you can design with clarity and deliverability in mind. And I promise you, when I say design, this is honest, this is about as easy as a coloring book, you guys. It's really pretty simple if you use the tools we gave you. We're going to talk about really briefly as well, why Get Oiling is the choice for you as a brand partner, right? This makes email easier, safer and more affordable than platforms like Flowdesk. And yes, I did say safer. We're going to talk about that and we're going to get into live help and Q and A. So if you have questions, you're in the right place. We love to have you here. We've got three of the smartest people I know on the call here today who can answer those questions as we are going through the call. So please don't hesitate. We do have a lot of folks on the call here today and expect to have a lot more to come. So please do make sure that those questions go into the Q and A so that we don't miss them. But do keep it going in the chat. Excited to actually connect with you guys. Lacey, I see, can you send this link to my brand partner? Absolutely. If you would like to invite them to this call, tell them we're about to get started. Let them know, bring them in and we'll also of course have a replay. So we'd be thrilled to have them here. Alright, so today, if you are here live, we are thrilled to have you. I see a lot of familiar faces here, a couple of new ones as well. Welcome, excited to have you. If you're watching this as a replay, you can join us at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession on a future live call, just like this one. It is free and we do this every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time for all brand partners, anywhere in the world that want to learn how to work smarter with their young living business and leverage technology and an easy, fun and smart way to do it. If you would like to work together, as one person did sign up to work together here today, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review and you can get your own spot on one of these upcoming calls. These are community-wide calls, but we can spend time, dedicated time together and we do reserve that space for you every Thursday. If you wanted to sign up for something like this, you can have 15 minutes or you know, five, however much time you need in that span and we can work together. And again, it's free. If you would like a hand with getting things done, we also have an incredible team who can do stuff for you, right? If you want this design handled for you, if you want something built for you, our team can do it. Getoiling.com/conceivers where you can go to learn more. And listen, before we get started, it's a couple of really important things that we need to discuss. Before we start really getting into branding our emails, we need to make sure that we have our branding established, right? So I want to recommend that you, if you don't already, have yourself a brand kit set up in Canva. Now, this is possible if you have Canva Pro and you do not have to have paid Canva to do this, just so you know. I do recommend it though. It's you know, a little over a hundred bucks a year US and it is, it's a pretty indispensable tool. If you're going to get serious about how you show up online, this plus Get Oiling is a no-brainer and you got a lot to work with there. You don't have to though, and I'll show you an alternative if you, if you don't want to use the paid version. So what this would include though, if you're creating a brand guideline is you want to have basically a document that you can reference, maybe like a PDF format on your computer, on your desktop where you can grab colors really easily. You're going to want to have brand colors, fonts, logos, images, elements. We'll talk a little bit about what that looks like here in a bit. You just basically want to lock in what you look like, right? How you want to show up? Because you want to show up looking the same everywhere, whether that's on your website, on your socials, and of course, in people's inboxes. If you start sending stuff with lots of colors and images and fonts and things that are out of the norm for you, you will create, and I know this sounds weird, you create a trust issue, right? Because people start to wonder, well, wait, what is it that this person is about? What you really want is consistency and that's really the whole point of this first piece here. Also want to make sure that you set your colors and fonts up in Get Oiling. And I want to encourage you to do this absolutely today if you haven't already. This is something that is available. If you don't have a premium or higher plan, we do have a branding add-on that you can reach out to our team about. It's very affordable and it really does save you a lot of time in having sort of the colors that you want to work with there and ready for you to go. Again, not absolutely necessary, but it will make your life easier. And then I want you to think about what your most common emails are that you send, right? Are you promoting something? Are you like a call, an event? Are you sharing a lead magnet in your funnel? Are you sending a newsletter, right? So I want you to think about those most common email formats that you might use because today we are going to establish what that sort of suite of templates are for you. Because I want you to be able to, just like grabbing an item of your wardrobe out of your closet where it comes to your emails, you're going to have a capsule and there's just a few that you're ever really going to use. And there may be some little accessories and those will be our sections that we'll talk about here in just a bit. So some examples, and these are what we're going to actually be talking about here today are a newsletter template, a call invitation, so or an event invitation, an event promotion, and maybe even like a section that shares your latest blog post. Now, the brand templates that we're going to create today are going to be your newsletter, of course. And this would include your newsletter sections for things like events and blog posts. Well, also, I'll show you where you can find a lead magnet delivery option as well. If you are offering something different than a weekly wellness tip in your funnel, we will talk about event promotions and reminders. We've got some templates for you to that end as well. And then you could also set up some custom signature sections and we'll talk about that today too. And then you also can include where you'd like testimonial and case study sections. We could also discuss some other really interesting options for our newsletter sections. I think that there's a great case to be made for maybe turning some of your saved replies into sections for your email templates, as well as, you know, if you ever want to highlight product, there are ways for you to kind of create a library for yourself as well, where you can, you know, share images of product, links to purchase and little blurbs and information so that you can easily pop those in when you want to share them. So let's talk about this quick distinction here. If you have been using Get Oiling for any amount of time, you know that before we had this amazing new email builder that Greg created, we have a basic email editor and it's awesome and you should still use it. You know, if you need to send something that's basic, this is what you need. It's great. It's highly deliverable. Works awesome. And we have this feature called Saved Replies where you can just take blurbs from those emails and save them, or even entire emails and save them and use them in other emails in the future or on their own for different purposes. So you don't have to go and dig up that link and that image and that formatting. You can just pop it into whatever you'd like, right? So we love Saved Replies. It actually is something that's available for you to use in your lessons, in your online classes. If you have a member area on your account, it's also something you can use for blog posts. It's just a really cool thing to have. Now, we have an answer to Saved Replies in the email builder and it is called Sections, right? So in your email builder, you have Sections and you can customize and create your own. So let's get into some best practices for email design before we actually go into designing. Highly recommend, please, please keep things simple, right? Because at the end of the day, because we can, doesn't mean we should. It's an important thing to always remember. We can make it look nice and we should make it look nice. But we want to make sure to be careful to not overdo it. And that's because we don't want to overwhelm visually such that the message of the email, which is the most important thing, the call to action and what it's saying is missed, right? Over how busy or disjointed or whatever the email might look like. And then of course, deliverability, which can be impacted depending on how you set up your emails. You always want to err on the side of less is more, in particular where images are concerned. Now, speaking of images, also important to use what's called alternate text on all of your images. And I'll show you how to set this up as well. This is an important final check before you start sending stuff with these templates that we create today. If you don't have this and someone has a device that cannot open images inside of emails, perhaps they have low data or whatever, you need them to be able to still see and understand what's there, right? So we do want to be mindful about that. And then we want to utilize some of these tools that we have. We have a previewer. You want to send yourself a test version even, look at it on your phone, look at it on your desktop to just double check and make sure you like how the design is showing up. And then I'll finally show you how to use Mail Tester to actually send a copy of this template to a mail testing tool. It's totally free. That'll actually give you some feedback if you have any issues or errors in terms of things that might impact you landing in someone's inbox as opposed to their spam, right? And then of course, I want to encourage you, start with our Done For You templates. We've created a lot of them for you. I'll be showing them to you here in a moment. They really are designed to help you to get a head start. And we've got Canva templates that are included there as well. You don't have to go reinvent design from scratch. And if you've been using any of the templates that we've created, you're going to be really happy because the new ones that we've released today are in line with those that we, that you guys were introduced to last week. Now, real quick, I need to make sure if you don't know this, you need to know this. Get Oiling is built by and for brand partners, right? And the tools that we have here are tools that are literally designed for your use, for the business that you run, that you, that you're out here putting your heart and soul into. It's important for you to know that a lot of the big name email providers in this space are not actually friendly to the work that we do. And if you go and you read their terms of use, their policies, what have you, there are explicitly written prohibitions of how you send things, what kind of stuff that you send. Or in the case of something like Mailchimp, they just straight up say, if you're network marketer, you're not supposed to use this, right? Obviously, I'm paraphrasing, but you guys can go check this out. Really important. You don't want to build your business on Quicksand. Sending email is a critical piece of what you do and how you stay in touch with people. You can make pretty stuff with them, but, but why would you risk it, right? At the end of the day? And listen, for as little as $9 per month with a seed plan with Get Oiling, you get a full business system and not just email. And look, if you were to go to Flowdesk or Mailchimp, you would pay as much for just their email feature as you would for a basic plan that Get Oiling offers, which gives you a website, a custom one at that, including all of our built-in themes and a member area for you to take your groups off of Facebook where you are not going to be censored by anyone, where you can send emails, where you can upload your entire VO file, communicate with who you want to, because we have a tree viewer, guys, we're built for network marketing. We're built specifically for young living, right? So just tell your friends, Get Oiling's got everything that you need in one place. And of course, we are just so honored and excited to be a part of your journey and helping you get oils into every home. And, and we prove that by showing up all the time, every day with real human support, whether that's in our Facebook group, whether that is via email on these calls, we're here for you. We're always creating content to help you make your life and business easier. And yeah, so if you didn't know, now you do. Let's go get into some design, guys, here today. I'm really excited to share this with you. Now, just to, to get started here, I want to encourage you first to take a look if you have colors and fonts set up in your system. If this is a feature that's enabled, this means that you are at a premium or higher planned, or you have a branding add-on, you'll have your colors here. And, and I want you to make sure if you have Canva, that in your brand kit, which again, that's going to be something that's available for Canva Pro. I want you to make sure that the colors that are in your, your brand kit are the same colors, here we go, that are in your Get Oiling system, right? Now, if you don't have Canva Pro and you're not ready to invest in it, or you don't have a Get Oiling plan, that would allow you to, to add that, you don't want to spend any more money, it's totally fine. Let me show you how you can go about setting this up for yourself. I just want you to, and we do have some trainings, like this, you know, templates that we've done as well, that give you access to something like this, right? See one of our branding trainings. But basically what you want to do is just go into your Canva account and let's just create any kind of document. I'm just going to use this one here. Alright, and I'm going to go into Elements and I'm just going to grab some shapes, right? And so that's, I'm going to be looking for, just going to type circle. There we go. Let me get this one here. We're going to select its color. And then I want you to just start adding these to your, all of these colors here, just have them all in one place so that you can easily go and, and just see them, right? And what I might also consider doing is, is adding some text in here. And see, when you click on this in Canva, you click on the color and you hover over it, you see where it gives you the number here? That's 626C66. That's something that may be helpful to you as well, right? So having this available is going to help you in the long run, okay? So again, highly recommend Canva Pro, highly recommend the branding add-on for Get Oiling. If you don't have this in place, please do make sure that you have these in place if you do, okay? Now, the next thing that we're going to do is head over here to this awesome email templates feature down here under our content library. This is where we're going to get started, right? So you can see here that I've actually already got a weekly wellness tips version that has Jane's branding here, which is pretty great, right? But I'm going to go ahead and start by adding a template. And so you can see here, we've got a bunch more. I like this, this soft floral. Here's the newsletter. And you can see here, it's already got space for you to say what you want to say, change the colors, et cetera. And all of the images that are here, you can actually click to open the Canva template. And this is going to be something that you can use, right? So you can go through, make these colors your own. Again, if you have your own branding here, I would click here on this color. If your colors are established, then I would go into your, your color palette and then maybe start making these modifications so that these actually fit your brand, right? So go through and really do pay attention to the details here and make sure that these are really looking the way that you want them to. I'm going to take this one and increase the transparency just a bit. So it's a little bit more saturated. Obviously, you can make these modifications to each of these, each of these images, right? So just as I did before, I'm going to do that here. And I may choose to use a different photo, which is very simple. I could just go over here to Elements. I can go to Photos and I could actually find, and I've searched for some stuff recently, maybe I prefer this one. And that's fine. I will just delete this one that's in the background here. And I'll stretch this one out to fit and send it to the back. Right? So this isn't a Canva training, buddy. I'm kind of showing you how you can make modifications to these, to these different elements that are provided here for you. So I'm going to just go ahead and do a final swap out here because I do want you to understand how you're able to make these changes. There's my background color. I need to go ahead and change the, the font color here so that everything is legible. Excellent. So I'm going to go ahead and download this, pretend like I've actually completed everything here. And so I can come back over here to Get Oiling and I can start making some swaps. Now, really important, right up here up top, this is actually an image. And you do have the ability in Get Oiling to, to make modifications to your sections like this. So if you wanted to just have, for instance, from Canva, if I wanted to just download this background here, I could actually do that and make that the background of the section and, and then actually put a, a text block over top. But for the sake of time here today, I'm just going to go ahead and do a swap here. I'm going to go replace. And it's just as simple as this, just grabbing that image from Canva. Now, again, we want to be mindful of how we, how we use images, right? So we don't want to do too many. Of course, we want to make sure that we have a high ratio of text to image and, and we want to make sure as always that we have alternative text, right? So this needs to be, if the, whatever this image does, we need to describe what that is here. And really, all this is doing is, is giving the title of the newsletters. So this is the weekly rap by Jane, right? And so if I have that there and this doesn't upload on someone's device, then it's going to show the weekly rap by Jane and they're going to understand that that's what it is and then they're able to continue reading, right? And this again, this is a blog post promotion. I'm going to go ahead in here and make a swap for the other version of this that I created. And we're starting to see that it's going to become important for me to make some changes to the background, right? Because I don't really like how these things are getting choppy. I want the background of this email to actually be this one here. That's a part of my brand colors. So I'm going to actually go over here to, I'm going to double click on the background and I've got my email background color, which you can see here. And I've got a message body background color and I need to make sure that this is changed so that it actually reflects the rest of what they're seeing. So you see, it's all this darker one now. I also need to go down and change the default font color. In this case, I'm going to change it to white because I need a high contrast so that people can actually read what's there. And it's already starting to really feel more cohesive. It's coming together. I could come over here to the button and choose a button that is actually a color that, that is fitting for my brand. It's one of my brand colors. You can see here, actually, if you have your colors set up in Get Oiling, those are going to show up right here for you, right? So these are your actual brand colors in your Get Oiling system, if you have that built in. But if you don't have it built in, you can grab a color that's just on your desktop. If you have, like I mentioned, maybe a PDF that you've created that has all the colors that you want to use, you just go and you can use the eyedropper tool, or you could even put in like a hex code to be able to, to do that. Alright, so essentially what we're doing here is, is just making these swaps for this particular type of template. And this one that I've created for you really is that simple. These are things that you're going to be making modifications to on, you know, a week to week, month to month basis. The point of this is not to compose an entire email, but to create a base design that you can use to build off of on a regular basis, right? So that's why we want to really be thinking about what the purposes are that we want these to serve. Okay, so this is the newsletter. This is going to be going out weekly. I want to make sure that I've got everything exactly how I want it. I've got some filler text here. We can leave that. I know I'm going to come back and write something different next week, right? This link to this blog post, this is going to change, right? So I can put this, I can, I can make modifications to this. So I want to give you just a quick thought, a quick idea. So let's just say, for instance, I have this template and I have been planning my content, which by the way, next week, if you guys want to get together for another workshop, we are hosting a, a planning workshop on getting your content planned for the holidays so that you can be on top of that before the season really hits. So if you would like to join us for that, we are going to be talking about that. And one of the things that we talk about in our content planning sessions is about blogging because it's really important for us to be showing up on a regular basis, providing value, right? And, and showing people that we are really about something that is substantive. We're not just here to talk about oils and sell oils. We are, we're here to help people make meaningful changes in their lives, right? So I am going to go ahead and create all of the images that I'm going to use for my blogs. So I'm going to go ahead and do that here. I'm going to send this to the back and I'm going to go ahead and give some transparency that is, just so that it kind of takes on the color of the background, right? And I could, I could repeat this for all of them and I'm going to go ahead and download them. And I only need this current one because I've already done this once. And what you can actually do when you are creating any email, for instance, is you could actually take this right here. I'm going to make a copy of this block. I'm going to swap out the image for that one that I just created for the other blog post that I'll be releasing next month, let's say. And what I'm going to do now is actually save these as their own sections, right? And that's what this little guy is right here, where it says, add this block to my saved sections. Once you have a section looking how you want it to look, you've got your alternate text there. Maybe it's hyperlinked, which you can do as well. So maybe I want to actually make this clickable so that folks, if they click this, will go straight off to the blog post. We could do that here as well, but I'm going to get this done and I'm going to actually add this to my saved sections. So I'm going to be maybe creating my November content. So I have, I'm going to be releasing blog posts beginning on the 3rd of November, so on Mondays. So this is going to be November 3rd, 2025, blog post promo. Right? And I'm going to go ahead and save that. And once this section is saved, I'm going to be able to grab it in a future email right here. You don't even have to keep it in this template forever. You can just, while you're in this template editor, you can start creating these saved sections. You can actually see this is right here, which is pretty cool. And, and I'm actually just going to delete it because I don't need it right now. I'm going to go ahead and save this one as well. This is going to be November 10th. And once again, that's there. Any email that I send out coming up, I can just drop this right in. It's there. It's good to go, right? Same for events. This is even more powerful for events. So here's this month's event title. I would definitely hyperlink this because I've got sort of like a fake button here on this image. So this needs to be saved. I'm going to be promoting this in every email that I send all month, right? Maybe you're using our weekly wellness tips. You can pop this right into your weekly wellness tip emails. So I'm going to say this is November 2025 event promo. I'm going to save that and now I can use that in future sections, right? So what we've done so far, you guys, is we have taken a template that Good Oiling has provided. We have made modifications so that it is showing up in the colors that we want for our brand. And, and we have saved parts of this that we know that we want to use, right? So I want to show you down here, actually, let me go over to our blocks. You've got all of these different features that you can also add in. If you want to go above and beyond what we've provided, sure, absolutely recommend it. You could pop in a divider down here. This divider can be a thin line like this one. You can increase the thickness. You can change the color of it. You can make it a dashed line, a dotted line, et cetera. Lots of different options here. You guys, the, the breadth of how you can like play around with this is, is so wide. Like it's so incredible, the, the amount of design control that you have here. It's incredible. So I mean, I could spend all hour, every session for the rest of the year and probably not do justice to all of the controls that you have with this email builder. So let me go over here and title this newsletter because I will need to reuse this. So I'm going to save this template as newsletter and I know that the next time I go to write a newsletter, I'll have basically everything in place. Obviously, I'm going to need to change out the wording that's there. My sign-off is there and it's the same every time. My, I've got a placeholder for the next blog post for the next event, et cetera, right? So once this is saved, what I want you to do is stop trying to edit it because we're done with it. We're going to come over to our list of email templates. You can see that it is now there. You can get a quick preview of it. You can also preview your sections. You can see all the sections that you have saved and I've saved quite a few. You can rename these and you can of course view them. These I've created from another template that you guys have access to, excuse me, for the weekly wellness tips. And you're going to be able to make modifications to that with your colors as well. So you can see all of these, obviously, if one is no longer useful to you. So if, you know, October 6th blog post, I guess I will be sending that, but once I'm done, I would delete that, right? And, and you can just have that cleaned up pretty quickly. And you can just have that cleaned up pretty quickly if it's something that you don't use anymore or you need to make a new version of. Now, let's go back over to our email templates and create another. And perhaps I would like to actually create an event confirmation and an event reminder email. And this is going to be going out to people who sign up for my event, right? So here is a version, again, following that same that same template, that soft floral template. We can go in and edit the settings overall. We had the message body background color was this darker color here. We need to make sure that our default fault, default font color is this white here. And I can even go in for this, inside of this section in this block. I could change this background color. I'm going to actually make that something that is more in keeping with the rest of the email, though. And this inner background, that's this part right here. I want to change that to this, maybe this darker one. I can add, just there's so many interesting things we could do here. I'm going to, I'm going to round the corners of the section. Or I can give the, a little bit of a border. Just, again, so very much you can do here. It's pretty, pretty cool. All right, so that's done there. I'm going to swap out an image. I also have a Canva template for this one. I can go edit that. Or actually, I don't want to edit that because this is yours. I don't, I don't want you guys to get the changes that I'm about to apply. Here we go. I'm going to go to view and open. There we go. And just like I did before, you can see I've got a couple of different versions of this. This is the one that's already in the newsletter, but this is the one we want to send out when people RSVP. So I'm going to go and do just the same thing that I did before. I'm going to click that background. I'm going to change that background color to this darker color that's in my palette. And I'm going to change the font colors so that they better fit my brand and, of course, are legible. All right, so I'm going to download that. I'm going to add that to my to my template. And it's really just as simple as that. And so you can see here, we're telling them that their seat is saved. We might say a little bit, we're going to pop in the image for our for our event. There we go. The color is already there. You see how easy it is when you have the color already established in your system and already in Canva? There's no guessing as to whether or not it's there and it's correct, right? And it's very simple. Again, there's one image in this email, save for our social icons down here. And with that, essentially, we're good to go. Now, once you actually create a custom section like this, and this is custom, by the way. If you were to go and create a social section, you can do that. So everything that you put a link into, it will populate for you. But as of right now, it doesn't populate in a particular color. It is going to show all of the colors. Now, if that's cool with you, you can do that. That's awesome. If you want to keep it super dialed in, you could also use images. So let me show you really quickly how this section was made so that you can create your own version of this and add this to any email that you might like to. So the way that I did this was I actually created a text a text section just by dragging that in. This is going to be centered. And then what I did is I actually have in Canva, let me go and maybe find in Canva these social icons. They're all just elements in Canva. So let me look them up. And I believe we actually provide you guys a copy of one of these files, one of these template files with your branding training that we have on our YouTube channel. So definitely recommend that you grab that if you like. But it's also, it's just really easy to find. Just go to Elements and type in Facebook, right? And they're here. And you can change the color of them, see? So what I would basically do is just for all of the social platforms that you plan to share, go ahead and create a version of those and make sure that they are all in your correct brand color for how you want this to show up. Now, here, I don't really like how this looks. Obviously, it's not a part of my palette, but it's also, well, actually, it might be that one. But it doesn't have enough contrast for me. I'm just not really liking how they show up. I think that it would probably look better if I just did black and white or if maybe I use this sort of goldish tan color. So I'm going to go ahead and do that and just click here. Do this, click Change All, Download These With A Transparent Background. If, again, you don't have Canva Pro, just make sure the background of your images is the same color as the background here, okay? So we're going to download all of these. I'm going to use transparent background. And then, once I have those, I can come back over here. And here's what I did. I went to Images here. I am going to go and grab my first one. And remember, you only have to do this once and then it's done forever. So I'm going to go and I'm going to add Facebook. Oops, look how big it is. So what we need to do first, and I also clicked away too soon, sorry about that. Let me grab Facebook. Let me let that upload. So a couple of things we need to do here, actually, a few things. Number one, we need to make sure that this is displayed in line. Number two, we need to make sure that this says Facebook. Number three, we need to change the size. And I believe, what is, what is the pixel size that I put on these guys? Let me see. Change size 30, 30 pixels is what I did. So I'm going to change the size, click it, change size 30px. Now she's shrunk, excellent. And finally, critically, put your Facebook link in here, right? Right? So your Facebook profile goes here. If you want to open in a new tab, you can say that. You don't have to, click Insert. And then we're going to repeat. Next, I'm going to do Insta. And it's just, it's a repeat of the process, right? I'm going to size it down to 30 pixels. I'm going to name it. I'm going to make sure that it is displayed in line. And now you can see that they are side by side, right? And I, again, also need to make sure that it has a link, right? So I can go ahead and save this section. So this is going to be my social links. I'm going to save that section. And that will live in my saved sections. And so in every email template that I create, I can pop that in and it has what I want it to have. Now, let me also show you guys really quickly how you can start maybe taking some of your existing saved replies and moving them in to your into your templates here. So one option is to just create another section, like a text section. Go to Edit The Text and then just pull in your saved reply information, right? Which you can do right here. That's very simple. It's very easy. And that's great. Another option, and this is a quick trick. I know we're going to be leaving our builder here, but the builder also lives in another place. And that's over here under in our campaigns. So you can actually edit your campaigns using the builder as well. So you build your campaign messages with this. So I'm just going to go and just create a new campaign. And I'm actually not going to use this for anything. So it doesn't matter what you name it. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to go over here and I'm going to use the basic email editor. I'm going to go find my saved replies. So maybe it's this one here. All right, I like that well enough. And now I'm going to go and click Edit In Email Builder. And I'm going to see exactly that saved reply right here. So what am I going to do? I'm going to go and name this, whatever it was named in my saved replies. And now it's in my saved sections. Right? So just real quick, just to reiterate, what we did was we just opened our Campaign Maker, right? We're going to add a new message to our campaign using the basic email editor, which is how we would typically use saved replies, right? I would maybe grab, here we go, here's this awesome, great big email from our friends at Monthly Content Club. I want to turn this into something that I can pop into the email builder. So what do I do? I come over here and I click Edit In Email Builder. And now it's there. And now, if I want to talk about alkaline, I can take this, save this section and name it alkaline. And I could just, the next time that, you know, I know the gift with purchase for that month is alkaline, I could just drop this in, right? Obviously, again, change the background colors, change the fonts, swap the images. Make sure you've got that alternative text on the images. Make sure your links are correct and you're good to go where that's concerned. All right. So once we've got, and again, I've made you guys a bunch of different templates that you can start working with here today. All you have to do is click Add. If you would like to start with one of the template themes that we've created here, we've got the soft floral, we've got graphic gray, we've got leaf. All of these have four different types of emails. One of them is a newsletter, of course. Another is a lead magnet delivery, right? So if you're giving away some kind of a freebie, these, again, Canva files are here. There's just a couple of images. And you can see, I've actually used the, this cool feature here to in this, I've moved the the margin over because I want this arrow to point, you know, more accurately toward it from this image. And you can go into the preview and see that it is actually showing up that way. Now, my, my Mac is behaving weirdly with how this is showing up with the mobile builder. But you can see, you scroll, scroll a little side to side. Now, once you have something like this made and you like how it looks, excuse me, I highly recommend that you send a copy of something like this to yourself. And then I also recommend that you use Mail Tester. Okay, so let's first send this to ourselves. So I'm going to go find myself. All right, here I am. Here's my contact. I'm going to click Send An Email To This Contact. And I'm going to grab my, we'll say it's my leaf newsletter, right? And this is one that I already have saved. It's mine, it's good to go, I love it, it's ready. I need to give a subject line. Here's my newsletter. Let's see, October 2025. Get my tips and the latest from the blog is my preview text. I'm going to click Done. And it's ready to go. And I could go ahead and send that right now. Now, I'm going to look at that on my device. I'm going to see if there's anything that's behaving weirdly, if there's something that I might want to change. Do I like how it's looking? That's sort of your final test. And then another thing that you want to do is you want to go to mail-tester.com. You don't have to do this for every email you send, but I would test a version of whatever the, you know, the versions of these things are that you're creating. So test your lead magnet delivery one, test your email that's for reminding people about events. Test the one that's about all of it, your newsletter, et cetera. So you're going to go to mail-tester.com and you're going to copy this address that they gave you right here. And then we're going to leave this tab open. We're going to come back over to Get Oiling. And now I've already created a mail tester contact. And I recommend you do this as well. All right, here's Mail Tester. So what I did basically was I went to Add and I named it Mail Tester. And I put the email address in right here that it gave me on that website. Now, I've already done this. Keep a version of this and then you can just make edits to this contact. So here, I'm going to pop that in and save. Now I'm viewing this contact. I can send it that same thing, right? So here's my October newsletter. And this is get the latest from the blog. Done, send. And then we can come right over here and check our score. So once it's ready, it's going to tell me whatever is wrong. It's going to flag anything that could create a problem. Okay, so please make sure that you do this before you finalize and start sending out any versions of these things that you design. Really, really important because I don't want you to put in all this work only for things to not work out well for you, right? And look at that, we can send. We've got a 10 out of 10, right? So spam assassin likes us. We've got, it's expected if you send HTML emails, this is fine. You can see you've got kind of micro things that they that they knock off. And it's okay if you don't understand what's here. If you see something that's like a big red flag and you're not sure what it is, just reach out to our team. We're here to help. So yeah, you can actually see there's the HTML version. Look at that. Greg, we might have a bug inserting a little left side margin situation, I noticed. Yeah, you can see all of the stuff that it says. But at the end of the day, you're looking for all these green check marks, a 10 out of 10. And we know that that's good to go, right? So you get to play with this as much as you'd like. I would basically recommend that you create an email for a few different send types that you use frequently, right? So if you are someone who, oops, video. If you're someone who hosts events every month, then you're going to want to have a version of your newsletter that includes a promotional saved section that promotes the event for that month. So that every email you send out leading up to that event can be promoting that. You also want to have for your campaigns with your events, that reminder email, right? And again, when you have that done, maybe in that image that reiterates the date and time or the section where you write it out and spell it out, the date and time, which is preferable, to be fair. I used Canva Images today just for the sake of expediency. Because again, we could spend all kinds of time doing this. But once you have those saved into your saved sections, it's just a matter of dropping them in to the future emails that you send, right? So, so, so cool and quick and easy. And really put together at the end of the day, it looks nice. So let me come over here to our questions. We've got some great ones. And we also have here today. Let me find this here real quick. I want to make sure, Stacy, that you know that I will be calling on you shortly. You are here, right? Stacy, pop your hand up for me, pretty please. If you are here and I'll, awesome. Okay, I'll be bringing you out in just a minute to chat. Okay, Sarah says, can you talk about branding? When it's easy to do branding on your site and things with fonts, but it's better and works better with things like Gmail, you don't use fancy fonts? Yeah, this is actually really important for your brand across the board. I really recommend that you use a Google font. Number one, they're loyalty free. You don't have to pay for them. You don't have to go get a license for them to legally use them on your site. You know, you might not know this, but the fonts that you use, you need to actually have legal permission to use, right? And so if you're using those open use fonts, you're safe, you're good, right? And we actually have all of those already enabled in your Good Oiling system. And we highly recommend that you only use those, the ones that, in particular, and when you're selecting fonts in your emails, we actually have sort of a list of the best ones to use that are going to show up most reliably in people's inboxes, all the way down to ones that are not going to show up reliably, right? So always, again, because the point of your emails is for them to be read, we want to make sure that they're showing up deliberately, right? And you're making those design choices deliberately. So whether it's on your website or in your emails, I recommend going with something that's simple, going with something that's open source, unless you want to buy a license for something. And then if you want to use something that has a lot of flourish or a lot of style, you can create images that include those, in particular for email. You don't necessarily have to do that with your website. You can import and use fancy fonts and stuff on your own website, custom fonts. But in your emails, it's not going to work the same way. So use images if you really want to be dialing in, in that way. And your emails can absolutely look pretty with basic fonts. Absolutely. Like, they can be highly stylized. One of the, actually, one of my favorite templates, and I don't have a bunch of different versions of this, mostly because I think that it speaks for itself, this minimalist newsletter here. I think this looks great. All of this, this is an image up here at the top, to be fair. I wanted to get like the line just so. So, you know, this isn't absolutely necessary. But this is awesome. And it's got this very sort of, I don't know, stark graphic look that's not overdone. But I actually think it's kind of pretty. It's got this sort of pinky beige in the background. Forgive me, I'm a millennial. And, you know, and it's got, you know, just a couple of images where they belong. It's got a little line art in this image here. And this is a very basic font, but it looks good, right? It's got, it's got a style. So, so yeah, it doesn't have to be curvy and cursive and, you know, Britney font or whatever everybody's favorite thing is on Canva to look good. And in fact, even though those things look stylish, when you want somebody to take serious what you're reading, like open an email and read it, we got to, you know, basically use that in an image and then get into the most basic font that's easy on the eyeballs as quickly as possible. All right. All right. Donna Marie says Pam from Get Oil and Create on my website. Awesome. Should I reach out to her if I want my email to look consistent with the branding on my website? Or do I just need to replicate colors and fonts? So, I mean, by all means, of course, you can reach out to Pam. In fact, Pam hosts office hours. Where you can hop on a call with her for free. So if you wanted to get some guidance on that, since she did your design, I would highly recommend that. If you guys don't know, Pam, absolutely brilliant. Another favorite Canadian on our team. Hi Colin. If you go over here to our dashboard and you go to the Success Academy, click over here where it says get help from a real person. This group help call Pam hosts at least once a week and they're always small groups. It's always very hands on. She's brilliant. She's an experienced copywriter, designer, understands the system. And of course, if she created your website, you know, it's great. She could probably help you know exactly what to do where that's concerned. So you can DIY this, of course. And if she set up the brand of fonts and colors in your system for you, then you're basically almost there. You just want to make sure that those colors are selected. And then if the fonts, if applicable for email, are selected in the templates that you create. All right, Stacy says, can I send Tip Tuesday to my entire team and opt them in myself? Or do they need to opt in with a landing page link? If you have their permission, you can apply the tag and apply the campaigns to them directly. If they, if they did not give you express permission to send them an email every week with a tip in it, then I would be, I would basically send them the landing page and say, hey, if you would like, you can sign yourself up for this. It's better for you to have a smaller list of people that reliably open your emails than to have a massive list of people that you hope some will open. Because the latter of these two options is going to impact your send score negatively in the long run. And that's going to mean that future people aren't going to receive your emails reliably. Okay, when you get a red flag that says didn't save contact administrator, what is happening? So if something didn't save, I experienced this in Safari from time to time on a Mac, just hit save again. And usually it's going to be fine. But if you get a continual error and an issue with saving something, definitely shoot us an email. Obviously during business hours and after, our team is super responsive in the Facebook group via email. Shoot us a message if you're seeing that repeatedly. But generally, if it's not saving, just hit save one more time and it's probably fine. And do the Tip Tuesday template, do they have more information loaded in the template? The one you were seeing was talking about foods to avoid, but didn't see that specific information. So what I provided as the Tip Tuesday template is really just for the design layout for the style. Because every month we provide you with that content, right? So every month you're going to get access to a new campaign. So we just recently, a couple of weeks ago, released Octobers and you can find that. Let me show you guys real quick where you can find that. Right over here under online resources and courses. It's this weekly wellness content. Right here on our blog, we release that content every month and you can go and claim it. And we do have a newsletter design version this month that you can claim. All right. Is it possible to toggle your signature on or off for these? So you can have different signatures for different email or would it be better to have no signature and just make different signature blocks? So you, okay, so these. Emails that are built in the builder, what we were taught, we've been looking at here today, the design focused one. They don't automatically attach your signature, even if it's campaign. So that means that you get to decide what that is. So what I would do is just, if you need several different types of signatures, I would create several different types of signatures. Put those in your saved sections and then you can put those into the emails where you want to use them. It will automatically import over the signature that you have in your, in your contact settings in Get Oiling. But you don't have to keep and use that. You can have a different version. You can style it however you like. All right. Are the sizes of the template images given so that we can match that in Canva when swapping images directly? So the Canva files that are included with each of these templates have the exact images in the same resolution that are in the templates themselves. So you don't have to resize anything. It's all there. You just make it yours, download it and just swap the image and use that alternate text. All right. Could you explain the signature block, how it works versus what's already set up? Yeah, real quick, let me show you guys. The signature block that is in your email templates is going to automatically import what you have already. So if we go into our contact settings, actually, let me just do that in this new tab. If you go to general settings under contact settings, you'll see that whatever you have here is actually going to automatically populate as your signature block. So if I go back over to email templates and I want to create a new one. I'll use this one. And I grab this signature and pull it over. You can see that this is the same as this, right? But it doesn't have to be, right? So this is, this is always going to pull over if you use signature. It is going to pull over what you have here. Right? And this is the one that attaches to your campaigns that are sent out using the basic email editor. But if you wanted to create other versions of your signature, you could do that as well. Right? And so you can just do that by creating a section and saving those into your sections. And then having that, when you, again, you're just creating these templates, they're going to be easy to just insert. And you don't really have to think about it again, because if it's there, it's always there and you're good to go. All right, where do we find these templates? Yeah, you just go to your content library, you click email templates. And whichever ones that you have actually created and saved will show up here. All you have to do is click Add. And you'll see all the ones that you have to choose from if you want to use ours as a starting point. All right. Is there a dyslexia proof Google font? That is a really great question. And I don't know the answer to it. If anybody on the call does, I invite you to please help us with an answer to that. I'm actually unsure. I am not a professional designer and I think that that's a testament to how easy the system is to use. Because this is not my wheelhouse and I find it very quick and easy to use. But, but at the end of the day, if I were a designer, I feel like I would know the answer to that. And I unfortunately don't. If anyone has any feedback, let us know. All right, Paula says it happens when I use the, okay, I think you're maybe chatting Paula with Greg or another team member here. Okay, Stacy, thank you so much for your patience. How can we help? If you'd like to unmute, you are welcome to.
Oh, I think you answered most, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I think you answered most of those questions that I had about the content on the template. I didn't realize I have to find the bundle. But I thought, I thought I claimed it already. So I'm just new to this and I should have been doing this five years ago.
No worries.
Thanks for having these. I am learning so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go through the claim the bundle and then where do you, where does it pop up?
Yeah, that's so the bundle that you claim is actually a campaign. And so I'm going to find October in my campaigns.
Yep, I got that there. Yep.
Excellent. So do you see the, oh, there we go. Do you see the block format one?
Yes, yep.
Excellent. So that's what you're going to do. You're going to open that up. And we already have these pre-designed because the whole promise of our weekly wellness tips is that you don't have to change it unless you want to, right? And I actually went in and already made changes to these because the one that would have been claimed, you're going to see that this is a green color. So, so you can just go to edit the message. And here you go, click Edit Email and now you're in the builder, right? So you can make all of the changes here. And so this is actually the first one for October. So you can go in and you can add an email background color. Now it's this gray. You can swap this image out. You can change the background color of the email. Maybe I want to use, oops. Maybe I want to use.
I'll put more information in because this is just a template because one of them, I said that earlier, the foods weren't in there. And I'm like, oh, where is that hiding? But this is, I'm building on that, this template then.
Yeah, more or less. Yeah. So well, this, this is actually, so these weekly wellness tips that we provide, and again, these are the ones that you guys can find. If you go to the Success Academy under online resources and courses, weekly wellness content. Here you get the landing page and then you can go and find our most recent campaigns, right? So all of the ones that we've released are here. And so in the blog post here, you claim this, it's already ready. It's already written. It's already linked. If you are outside of the US or you want to change what's being offered, you will want to adjust the links that are shared, which is pretty simple and straightforward. But aside from that, like they're already written. So like the first week talks about why gut health matters for whole body wellness and that is exactly what's here. And you don't really, I mean, unless you want to, you don't really have to make any changes to the verbiage, the words that are here at all. You can add more to it. So. So I could actually say, for instance, if I wanted to use the Tip Tuesday emails that we, that we provide to you guys as a starting point. I'll go in and for, you know, each of the four emails, because it just, it's very simple, swap out the background color, swap out the images or insert, you know, sections that you already have that you like. But maybe I have an event that I'm promoting. So let me come and pop this coming soon in here. Let me, I'm going to actually drag that down. The email a bit, because I do want to put that maybe after this divider. So coming soon and maybe I'll just go ahead and grab that section. And obviously this isn't for the same template, but here's my event. My event promo that'll go right there. And then maybe I want to promote what I put on the blog. I'll go ahead and I want to put that maybe further up. So from the blog, maybe I'm also talking about gut health, right? And so you can just drag those things over. So from the blog can go. Right? Oh geez, what am I doing here? I can drag that. There it is. And then I can find my blog post and I can pop that in there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I was missing something. When I read it, I was waiting for that. Again, this is just still new to me. So thank you.
Yeah, no worries. You can join as many of these calls as you like and, you know, ask for help. We're here for you. Fantastic. All right, let me see. Oh, Greg says open sans and Montserrat are two very common fonts on, on a list of, I don't know if they're dyslexia proof, but they're certainly dyslexia friendly. They're, they're, they're sans serif fonts, serifs are like they got the little feet on them. And, and sans serif are a little bit easier to read, I think, across the board. So like if you look at this, like this is a serif font, you see these little, it's got like little, little toes and feet and stuff. That's the, those are little serifs. Okay. I think there were a couple more questions before we get going. Yeah, Lacey. Yeah, let me, let me pull you out here real quick. All right, you wanted to figure out which one is home and to fix a button. Tell me more.
So I'm going to my, edit my website. And when I go to my pages, I'm assuming it's under pages. It, I don't know which one is my homepage because I have it, when you first look at it, it says new course first aid kit. And then it has a button for learn more, but it doesn't go anywhere. So I wanted to get that button fixed.
Okay. Ooh, look at that. All right. Oh, I see. Okay. So that's because, so you've got a custom image that's up here on top. And this is going to always, because this is a built in theme. When you click learn more, it's going to pop down to here. Because that's just how the, that's how the built in theme works. But if you wanted to create a page on your website and make it your homepage, you can. And all you have to do is just click set as home. Once you're ready. Yeah. So what you have, what you have is your homepage right now is just, it's one of our built in themes. You've just added a, a custom image, which is cool. If you wanted to use this the way that you're using it, I would just make sure that up here, you say something about the first aid course and you put the, the link in, you know? And look, you've got your events. I'm so proud of you. Look at that. That's so good. Awesome. And yeah, you've.
Is there a way?
Yeah.
Is there, because I really like this homepage. This is the automatic one. I was just wondering, is there a way, instead of having that first aid, could I have my most current event going to be right there?
You can, but your, but your events are right here. So there is that and you've got it in your menu. But you can choose, you can choose for your homepage to be your event list. If you want to adjust your, like, your actual homepage for your website, you can just go over here to menu. And you can, of course, it looks like you've already done this to some extent. You can modify your menu further. But you can also assign what page is your homepage from here as well. So it's totally up to you. Like, once you have something that's custom, you can, you know, have that be your homepage. And then these, these built in themes that we have, you can also save those. And, and, and use them as links where you can send people to a page that's, you know, talking about pets, because we have one of those or, you know, talking about babies, et cetera. So you can still utilize these even as you go more. Custom with your homepage.
I guess I'm just, I still don't know how to change that, that image right there. Because I don't want to have that like that. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No worries. Yeah, no. So that, the image that you uploaded here, I believe is going to be under customize my site. It's not something I've done in a long time. Let me see. Customize the built in theme. Where is the, is it the carousel? Yeah, customize carousel images. That's where you did it. You've got those.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep, sure thing. I always get reminded because I never, I never do that. All right. Thank you guys for sticking around. There will be more of these, right? If you've got something that you want to work on, if you're working on your design or you're stuck, let us know. That's what these calls are for. These are work sessions that are here to help you better contextualize and understand how to use these tools. So that you can work smarter in your business. I don't want you to sit down and spend an hour to design something every time you send. If you create maybe three or four of these that fit the uses that you normally need them for, then you're golden. You're good to go, right? Once you have those done, you use them every time you want to send something. And remember, we still have the basic email editor, which is super great for just sending off a quick message, right? They don't have to be highly designed every time you send something. So thank you guys for being here, for being a part of this incredible community. And, and thank you Greg for making this awesome feature. I hope you guys love it. You guys tell your team. Save your business, come to get oiling, save a lot of money in the process. We appreciate you guys. We'll be back here at the same time next week. Take care, everybody.